And now we will adjourn for the budget workshop.
Not adjourn, we're going to.
I'm sorry. Convene, reconvene for the budget workshop. Motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? If adopted the agenda, finance.
Okay, this will be our first public hearing for the budget.
And Ms. Holman, I know we are doing this more in council meetings, but tell them what your position is. I should have done that earlier.
Oh, that's right. Jennifer Holman, Finance Director.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Okay, again, like I said, this is our first public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2025 budget. We'll just kind of do a quick summary to hit the highlights of what's included in the budget. The total proposed 2025 budget is 56.9 million with 40% of that being general fund, 23 being water and sewer, 14% being the East Side TAD, 8% being capital, 6% debt service, 4% self-funded insurance, 3% solid waste, and hotel motel and stormwater is 1%, and then we have smaller, mainly special revenue funds that make up less than 1%. The proposed budget, of course, just know that the general fund will be reduced by 285,000, but based upon the setting, the rollback millage rate. But the proposed budget is 2% increase from the 2024 amended budget for the general fund. Water and sewer, a 10% increase, stormwater, a 28% decrease, and solid waste being a 2% increase. All the other funds are mainly your special revenue funds or capital projects that have their own individual funding sources along with your debt service funds. Our three major funds that you hear a lot of talk about is our general fund, which is our main operations of government. Again, it had a 2% increase. It went from 22.2 or almost 22.3 million to 22.8 million. Our water and sewer is showing a 10% increase of 11.7 million to 12, almost $13 million, and solid waste had a small increase of 2%. Budget notes for the general fund is we are now going to have a reduced millage rate, and we'll come back with proposed cuts. But other than the millage rate, we've seen an increase in our building permits of 570,000, 461,000 in sales tax, 201,000 in interest, 129,000 from the water and sewer fund for admin cost, 47,000 due to insurance premium taxes, 29,000 recreation fees, and a $208,000 decrease in intergovernmental grants. And that's primarily the reimbursement that we received in 2024 for the resurfacing of the parking lot off 61. That, of course, we won't be receiving that in 2025. Water and sewer revenue, there is a proposed 5% water volume rate increase, and that calculates to $101,000 additional revenue. For the average customer that uses 4,000 gallons a month, this equates to about 90 cents, a 90 cent increase per month. New agreements, as you know, are still being discussed with Douglas and Carroll County water authorities. These will require additional rate increases, but we're just not prepared right now or not ready. We're still preparing and waiting for those agreements to become active. And then we will be bringing before y'all what we feel like the rate increases need to be. Sewer rate increase is needed, but it's not included in the 2025 budget because our current focus is the water volume and the water increase due to our new agreements with Douglas and Carroll County. As you know, there's always more requests than there are funding, and you can see that for our budget improvement request, we had 8.46 requested. We were able to fund 7.12 million and had unfunded requests of 1.34 million. As far as our expenditures, some of our largest ones, we had a $200,000 pilot, which is pay in lieu of taxes payment to Carroll County per the TAD intergovernmental agreement. We have $100,000 landscape professional services and tree removal, the $100,000 in contingency, $84,000 in the police department for a special response team, and that's for training and equipment, $75,000 for economic development professional services. An example of that would be Carroll tomorrow. $58,000 in various maintenance and repairs of the library that's very much needed. And then on the water and sewer side, due to the anticipated increases in the water rates from Douglas and Carroll, that's going to be about a $600,000 increase from this year, and we're going to have about $1.3 million in water purchases. As far as personnel, we're at 16.2 million. Prior year was 14.6 million, which is a 10% increase. Of course, the majority of that of our employees is in the general fund, 81% with 16% being in water sewer. Solid waste, 2%, and stormwater, 1%. For this budget, it was very important for our employees to receive a COLA as well as the implementation of a salary study. That was very important to our city manager and deputy city manager. So the budget does include a 3% COLA for all employees at total 343,000, the implementation of a salary study at 248,000, and other salary adjustments and position reclasses of 119,000. We did, or we are proposing additional positions in certain departments, like a part-time codes enforcement officer at 28,000, two police officers for 158,000, two street technicians for 108,000, a grounds equipment operator for 60,000, an athletic coordinator for 61,000, and athletic maintenance tech for 56,000. This is salary and benefits. A parks programmer, a total of 31,000, which would also eliminate two part-time aides. As you know, we are self-funded as far as our health program, our healthcare. The budget is estimated at 90% of maximum claims, and the remaining 10%, which is around 200,000, is, we consider that savings, and it remains in those operating funds of the general fund, water and sewer, and solid waste. Our current cash balance in the self-funded insurance is 1.7 million. We are expected to have about $706,000 in admin fees, 1.7 in estimated claims and wellness expenses. So a total budget for self-funded insurance is just over $2.4 million. As far as our capital budget, you can see that we have $783,000 worth of equipment and vehicles. Some examples are on the administration side to have access control for customer service, welcome center in Avante. Customer service needs a new truck due to the current one needing a lot of repairs, and it's had a lot of problems over the past couple of years. On the public safety side, we are getting five vehicles and upfitting, a Ford Escape, a handheld emergency radios, four of those, as well as four Pro Laser speed detection devices. Grounds, a land pride cutter attachment. And community development, two trucks and a Ford Escape. In Parks and Recreation, some picnic tables and a field dragging machine or two of those. And Pine Mountain, one utility vehicle. On the site improvement side, what's currently being proposed in the budget is 258,000 for the North Avenue Building Chapel, 30,000 for the fellowship hall, and 10,000 for the old library. Grounds and Fleet Shop have some overhead heaters for their shop areas as well as a new HVAC for the grounds area, the department. Pine Mountain to replace the water wheel as a water feature for the pond and then replace one HVAC unit. Gold Dust have or add an additional pavilion and seating. And Powell Park, renno restrooms, utility closet and concession stand, add parking lot and bleachers and replace one HVAC unit. So the total site improvements that's being proposed is just over $402,000. Water and sewer, as you know, is an enterprise fund. This is not funded through tax dollars. This is funded through user fees. We have, on the water side, we have put in the budget for water meters and warranty meters. The biggest item is the GDOT bypass water line construction or betterment of 2.1 million. There's a tube settler replacement of 385,000. The engineering and design for sledge transfer for water plant to River Trace Force Main at 45,000, and some minor improvements to the restroom and windows at the water plant. So the total is $2.8 million of water capital. On the sewer side, the largest is the vacuum truck for 565,000 and the garage for storing that as well as other items at 24,000. The influent crane replacement at 57,000 and the flow meter replacement at 40,000. The Hickory Falls lift station at 435,000, and the north plant upgrade to 1.5 MGD and pump station at 300,000 and an F-150 truck at 60,000. So on the sewer side, we had about $1.5 million in capital. For distribution and collection, they have asked for and we're proposing an F-450 with a service body at $80,000. Stormwater, what's included in the budget is your sugar foods culvert replacement at 300,000, and we always also include around 100,000 every year for any other stormwater improvements that need to be made within the city. So our total stormwater capital is $400,000. So total all capital excluding SPOLOST that's funded or being proposed in the 2025 budget is $5.9 million. As you know, we do receive SPOLOST from both Carroll and Douglas. A lot of those funds have been allocated for different projects over the years. And for the 2025 budget, some new projects that we're using our 2021 Carroll SPOLOST for is the North Avenue Church gym, a rubber flooring. At Gold Dust, we want to convert tennis courts to eight outdoor pickleball courts and correct the drainage. We want the new pickleball court lighting, a new basketball gym bleachers, and rebuild the baseball concession stand. And at Powell Park, we want to construct four tennis courts. So that's 660,000. And then on the economic development side, we have $100,000 proposed for the Prospector Park improvement. And that wraps it up unless you have any questions.
I have a few.
Counsel.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Oh, no, you go. No, you go.
Okay, I had a question about the, just, I know you have probably said this 15 times, and I know I have heard it at least 15 times every year, but is the water and sewer, is that was up there? Is that coming out of the general fund or their respective enterprise funds?
Enterprise fund.
Okay, so those are coming, and I know multiple people have asked you this. Can, in case people are watching this for the first time, can you explain the enterprise funds?
Absolutely. Enterprise fund, we have two of them, which is the water and sewer fund and the sanitation and solid waste. Enterprise fund means that you run it like a business, meaning that you have user fees. Those user fees pay for the operating cost as well as the capital improvements for the fund. So it's not funded through tax dollars or anything generated for general fund revenues. It is its own source of revenue, and it is supposed to pay for itself and actually accumulate some funding so that you can pay for your larger capital expenses. Because of all the capital expenses, we have water and sewer is the most expensive.
Okay. And then the other question I had was in the, and I apologize we keep coming to this church, but the 95,000 in the church gym, is that part of that 250K?
Is separate.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, those are the only two questions I had so far.
Okay, Jennifer, so it's been said a couple of times since we've been doing these meetings and public hearings that a priority for staff this year was implementation of the salary study and the 3% COLA. And it was previously mentioned at one point in time that, and I can't recall by who, but I believe it may have been the interim city manager, that he asked certain department heads to pull back on capital requests and to prioritize the personnel request. Is it, and I know we have the full proposed capital request here, but is it possible that we could get a list of those specific items that were pulled in lieu of the personnel request?
Absolutely.
If we could do that, thank you.
Yes.
And then I'll just comment briefly. I am 100% in support of implementing the salary study. However, I believe that doing all in one year is, plus a COLA, is really ambitious and probably not realistic. And I would just propose, as just one council member, that staff present to us a proposal to phase that salary study in over some period of time. I think two or three years probably would be more appropriate, but that's, you know, that's just my perspective.
I appreciate you bringing up the cuts because that's a really good point. There's some things that didn't make it into the budget. But you've seen us through the year when we do budget amendments, and they say, well, guess what, we've got some money left in this fund. We can now go ahead and transfer it over here for this item. So that would be a real good idea for us to have those things that, you know, departments wanted, and I should say need more than want because if it's just a, depending on what the want is. Because there are the quality life things in Parks and Recreation that are just different, that make it good for people to live here and what they do with the seniors and the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, all that, the kids' fields. But if we knew what those were, I think when we have excess money, like, hey, the tax dollars are coming in more than we expected, or, because we do this, we do budget amendments all the time, that we should look at that list first before we start looking at something new unless it's an emergency. You know, because obviously they had some sort of priority with employee, department heads, and pay attention to those. On the salary study, the only thing I'd add on there, because I really do want us to be competitive in them there, I did have a few people, at least, whose eyebrows raised when they saw the amount of money that we were doing all at once. But when you say phase it in, I think we have to be careful about dragging that out too long because our salary study is how many years old now? It's one year old, so, okay, so that's good. That's good. That's better than it was three years ago. I couldn't even remember. Three years ago, so we're already behind. So, you know, how we phase that in, like, you know, so that it's not totally outdated by the time we phase it in, that's all.
The only thing I would want to add is that we did a pay study in 2018 that had been planned on being implemented over a few years, and we never finished that implementation.
Okay, so that is a breakdown from the level on staff from staying on top of it because we're not gonna, I mean, I'm not trying to take the pressure off us. We're not going to know if you're not bringing it to us to implement it. So, and I'm not saying it was you or anybody else, but that's a shame that when things like that fall through the cracks. That's not good. Okay. Yes, Councilman McCoy.
Thank you. What I was going to say was, I feel like, and thank you for clarifying, Tiffany, because I thought when I started a little over two years ago that we've done like two or three of these studies and they just never were implemented. So I would not want it to fall through the cracks. But to go back to Matt's point is if we did do it in phases, is there, this is just a suggestion, is there a way we could do it by percentages? Like, everybody gets, like, at this point, we're going to do 50% or maybe, sorry, Tiffany.
And the good thing is because we're not adopting it yet, we'll have time to come into the office. You guys be sure to give us any other information, your opinions that you feel about, just like you filled in on us not continuing to implement what we should have implemented.
So implementing it in phases like that, I mean, I'm sure we could come up with something. The only issue with that is that the pay grades from the pay study were implemented last October. So we're essentially hiring new employees with the new pay grades from the pay study.
Yeah, we need to address that.
So we're getting the current employees up to that level.
So you're saying if an employee leaves, can I pick on you, Diana? I know she just started, so hopefully this isn't the case. But say Diana gets hit by the bus tomorrow. I had to throw that out there. But let's say she wins the lottery, and she's like, I'm done with governmental work. I'm out of here. So if she were to leave, then the next person to come in, even though I know she's a new hire, but the next person to come in would be at that pay grade. So they would be coming in at it.
Yes.
Even though the person who was at the job was not at it.
Exactly.
Okay, so.
That's what we're trying to address.
Okay, so essentially you're paying your employees who have been there for a while less than the new people coming in.
Yes, because that was with the anticipation that the full pay study was going to be implemented and the pay grades. And then it didn't fall that way.
Okay, thank you.
How much have we got implemented and how much didn't?
How much what? I drop in the bucket.
A nickel's worth, okay.
Yeah.
Let's get that hashed out the next couple of weeks. We really do need to resolve that. That's a problem.
Well, Mayor, my question would be, how many positions are in that position like that?
In the pay study?
Right. How many, I mean, if we just, can we get a number to say that if this person were to leave or this person were to come onboard, they would be making, you know, X whatever pay grade?
So it really just depends. They're kind of all over. There's about 40 positions in the city that are affected by the pay study. So some are, you know, a couple hundred dollars different. Some are a couple thousand dollars different if you're looking at the annual.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions tonight? Because I do expect that we're going to have more. We've got stuff to work out.
I just want to say that this is another tough one because we have some great employees that work for our city. And they do deserve to be, to have their pay in a fair market. So I hate to hear that there's been, because I was unaware of that, that there had been a pay study done that had not been implemented before. So that's really disappointing to hear that. Because, I mean, I would imagine that the employees were probably expecting some sort of raise and for that to be implemented along the way. If, if, I'm saying hypothetically, but if there were implementing a certain percentage, let's just say half of the salary study and the other adjustments, if only half were implemented this year and half were implemented next year. However, that were decided to do, how can we make sure that that would not fall through the cracks again?
Well, I wouldn't let it.
Well, but what happens if you win the lottery?
Well, before she exits, she will make sure that we know.
Diana, also, my HR manager would not let that happen, nor Diana or Jennifer.
Well, then how did it fall through the cracks before? Because I'm sure that whoever it was that said they wouldn't, I'm sure that they didn't want that to fall through the cracks either. So how did that happen?
I can't speak to that. I got here in '21, so that was in 2018. But as far as I know, it just wasn't supported enough. We're offering the support now.
Yeah, I mean, look, as far as the rollback went, it's, and I know this isn't the rollback meeting, but they kind of go hand in hand. As far as the rollback went, I mean, it's really hard to tell our citizens that, hey, you know, we're implementing, I mean, it totals up to a little over half a millage rate. So it's really hard to tell our constituents that, hey, you know, we're going to keep the millage rate where it is when we're going to give staff over half a millage rate in pay. I'm not saying that you guys don't deserve it. So please don't take any of my questions or my statements as such because that's not the case at all. I think that you guys are great and you work hard for our city. I'm just trying to understand and wrap my head around how we got here.
Yeah.
And how we can get out and how we can get back where we need to be and still keep it fair and reasonable to our citizens.
Understood. We have realistically been behind the eight ball when it comes to salary for a long time throughout the, all of the staff. So we're just, this is to improve their life as well as ours and to keep these quality employees that we have by bringing them up to where they should be. We're competing with the surrounding counties and cities. We're able to retain them, and they're able to continue to learn and to work hard for us instead of them leaving to go somewhere else and we have to bring in somebody new. And then we're spending all that money again on training and certifications and licenses and that type of thing. So we have, we worked really hard on the morale part, and we, retention has gotten great over the past year. I've got three open positions right now when last year we had 12. So I think this would just be the final thing that will really make us a solid city as far as staff goes. And we won't have to look at all of that turnover and retraining and mistakes and things like that that can happen when you're having a new staff.
And at, there are times where some of it can be unavoidable because we prioritized the police department back a number of years ago over everyone else. And I mean that for a reason, though. There's a reason. It is very expensive because of the training to lose officers. And we were struggling with keeping them because of what was going on, you know, culturally at that time. There were people leaving law enforcement entirely, and we had those empty places, you know. It's kind of important. When you call 911, you want somebody to come. So I have no problem with us adding new positions because we've grown a lot.
Yes.
We're going to need extra officers, but we did prioritize them. And so we stayed up, I think, very competitive in that area.
In that area, yes.
I'm assuming we still are.
We still are.
It's the other areas we need to work more on. And we were embarrassingly low, this goes back some years, with our guys, I think about when Charlie was here in Charlie's department, with, you know, just some of our, and I have to say, out of administration, you know, it just wasn't acceptable, you know, what it averaged out per hour and stuff like that. And I know we started addressing that, and I'm sorry we dropped the ball.
Thank you.
I will comment that, at least, we haven't had HR persons for very long here in the city. I think it's made a big difference, so we like to have a go-getter.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Turnover does hurt.
It does.
Institutional knowledge, retraining people, so it's a little harder some. I know I'm generalizing some with the younger generation. Sometimes the focus is on how much can I make right now? And I've been talking since I became mayor with a lot of different people. I almost signed my grandson up with Atlanta Gas and Light. I go, wow, really? But y'all do this and the training and the tech stuff? I mean, it's a variety of fields with good benefits, but the thing is, it's longevity. And often they say, they're not the only ones, they're saying, they're coming in going, how much am I going to make? And they're not looking long-term at the benefits they're getting from staying in that job. And so I do know that people are a lot more mobile than they used to be with jobs and making career. But we do appreciate y'all that hang in there and learn stuff. And it's a big advantage when we go back and somebody knows, yeah, I remember that. So that was the problem over there five years ago, and this is what happened. It's very helpful. So thank you for bringing that additional information to our attention. I have nothing else, nothing.
You have a public hearing.
But I'm me. I have nothing else. So if y'all have before. So if y'all have before the hearing, y'all ready?
Yep.
Because I have nothing else that I want to add. I think we've covered it pretty good. And I'll ask my questions during the week as I get through some more material. We're going to open this up now for the public hearing section. And if you'd like to speak to the budget, you saw the presentation on a summary of the money going out and the expected revenue coming in. So if you'd like to speak, now is the time.
Is the full budget online? The full proposed budget online? Thank you.
Yes, the full budget is online. Not that you can't request a hard copy.
Hello.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I have comment, maybe questions. Looking at the proposed budget for 2025, I noticed that the East Tad has expected revenue of 8,108,108,485 dollars. Is there a breakdown of how that money from that East Tad will be spent since it is related to the Claycorn, Anderson, Merle, Ruby Street area? Is there anywhere that we can get a breakdown on how that money that is put, that is budgeted, how that will be used?
Can we make a notation on that? So we don't do the back and forth now, but we're taking note of the questions.
And then also, I noticed that there was a part in the presentation about the parts. And there was different parts that were mentioned, but the part that's supposed to be created for the Claycorn, Anderson Road, Ruby Street, our area, I noticed that there was no funding for anything in our district or area or village, as you want to call it. So have y'all budgeted any money for us? Because I don't see any money. And then three, I don't see anywhere where the grant that you received for our community was listed in the budget. And if so, how much is it left and how much is projected for 2025 budget? That's it.
Do we have that? So we can answer those questions? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak in regard to the budget?
Greg Roberts, 2142 Burke Dale. And that was my confusion over signing up. I didn't know what I was, which one I was going to want to speak on. One thing I would say, and I'll backtrack, because I've sent all of you an email a time or two. And so part of the previous administration, I'll tell you how you got in that situation with your personnel and their pay, was your highest level person at the city as an employee. It doesn't mean that that person's a bad individual, but just was not tuned in and probably was, I will go so far as to probably say, maybe not listening to everybody on the staff and then keeping the elected officials during those years abreast of what was going on. That can only happen if your top city staff member is not paying attention. I think it happens at almost every city and county, probably the state of Georgia as well. I talk to a lot of GDOT people all the time. And, but it's easier to handle on the local level. And so, and Jeff's an awesome guy. I don't know that his intent is to stay as the current city manager. I'm not sure what that's looking like. But hopefully, if that's not going to be the case, hopefully you do keep an assistant city manager. I think it's a mistake to just have a city manager. It's just too much to oversee. But hopefully you get a city manager that does not see this as an eight-hour-a-day job, that sees Villarica as a 24/7 kind of thing, to where they're available to not only you guys, but to the citizens. And that they're paying attention to their departments and listening to what's happening, particularly human resources in that area, because that information was available to previous staff. They just were not paying attention to it. And that's a shame for your employees. And here you are having to deal with this, and I certainly understand your position, because it's money that you'll have to deal with. And, but that's something that that person in that seat, I know you're sitting there, but that's where they normally sit. You got promoted. But the person that sits in that seat, that's your person that, I would think if I was in your seat, I'd be looking to that person, having an expectation that they kind of know things. And it's just normal for local government. Man, we all love our public safety, but, you know, other parts of your departments are going to cost you a lot of money if you're not staying up with those people. So the police department is extremely important. You cannot let that go. As a citizen, I'm not going to sit back and watch you just let it go. But at the same time, you've got a lot of other staff members that really do a good job and they really have to be paid attention to. But it's that seat that caused you your problem.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? You rush home from work for nothing, right?
Kristy Chastain, 239 Berkeley Drive, Steel. So first I want to touch on something kind of back to the millage rate. I know that there's a concern that if, you know, the world gets right and property values still start normalizing, because I, I mean, I'm not a real estate person, you know, if Ms. McCoy were here, I think she would, you know, probably have something to say. But I hope that the real estate prices right now are more elevated than what I think is normal. But should they start normalizing and we find ourselves in a situation where the property values go down and so that we won't have enough revenue from those values, I for one, and I'm speaking for me, if you had to raise the millage rate to compensate for that, that would be understandable. So I just want to get that out there. As far as the budget and the salary studies and cost of living adjustment, one of the things, I've been an employee at various places for a long time, and there's two ways to look at salary, employee salaries. There's cost of living adjustments and there's merit increases. Merit increases being based on performance. So I hope that we are doing employee evaluations every year and awarding increases, adjustments based on that performance and not just giving cost of living adjustments across the board. Because if you have a stellar employee and they get 3%, and you have somebody that just shows up and they get 3%, that's not equal. So I hope we're taking that into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, ma'am.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
I think it's more or less.